Okay, and so it is seven o'clock, and so I will uh call to order tonight's board meeting. Uh do are there any requests to remove items from the consent agenda for discussion?
None for me, no.
Nothing.
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay, so uh then we'll have a a motion to approve the order of items for the regular consent agendas.
Sub good.
Second, oh sorry.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, well let's just move right along to the president's verbal report, and I just wanna say happy spring.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, two sunny days.
And it and it feels like it.
Yes.
It does today.
It's great.
Today we we had that sunshine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sunshine. We had some sunshine today, and um you know, to me, I I think about the um I think about the Friends Garden coming to life, and I'm excited to see.
First crocus of the season.
Season has uh coming in.
It's all happening, it's all happening, so um it'll be nice to see that in the coming weeks and um see so many of our exciting programs for the library this spring. Um I will turn it over to Tara for the director's report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um well, as you can hear across the hall, the youth services librarians are very busy celebrating reading. Uh March is reading month after all. Um this tonight what's happening is the Battle of the Books, which is a Bloomfield Hills Middle School event for the fifth and sixth graders. And um we have fifty-seven participants. I think eleven teams, and they're battling it out over there, so I bet we'll hear more outbursts as the night goes on. Um this will end or culminate in late April with a visit from Kelly J. Baptiste, who is a Michigan author, and I think the author of one of the books that they've been reading. We are also participating in a One School, One Book event with Way Elementary. Uh the book that that school is reading is Fenway and Hattie, and the librarians have been supporting none of that by doing different programs and providing books and.
Okay.
We've also done eight kindergarten readers roundups. We've had eight classes of kindergartens kindergarters here, bunch of preschool visits, um and the regular storytimes. It's been a very busy month for these librarians. And adults is not to be left out. Uh they have also been doing all kinds of fun things this month. And they are capping off March's reading month with a local authors fair on April first. This is the first time we've ever done anything like this. We have twenty authors, local authors signed up.
Any here, what's the date?
April first from eleven AM to three PM. And they'll be set up sort of like, you know, bizarre craft fair in the community room.
Sure.
It'll be a chance for patrons to interact with authors and authors to interact with their readers. Um one of our very own staff, Amber Rose Hammond, is going to be one of the authors. And um another author just signed up today, Jim Benton, who wrote those Happy Bunny books from the nineties.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know he learned those books until here he goes.
Oh. Wow.
And they'll be selling their books?
Yeah. Yes, some of them will be selling their books, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, yeah. Um so uh March's reading month update wouldn't be complete without talking about intellectual freedom and the challenges that are still occurring. Have you all heard what's happened in Lapeer County over the last couple of weeks?
No.
Uh-uh.
Sorry to say.
The Le- the Lapeer County prosecutor um said that he was going to bring criminal charges against officials and or employees of the Lapeer District Library if the book Gender Queer was not removed. Gender Queer is a book that's been at the center of many of these challenges.
Yes.
Um it's a graphic novel. And the library director there uh refused to remove it on the spot when this uh request for reconsideration came up, and said it could move through the process. And there's been a lot of outrage in the community over this. They've had a couple of board meetings over the last couple of weeks, and they've had to move venues, sort of like what happened in Dearborn Public Schools um a couple months ago. People have been speaking out on both sides of supporting keeping it and um supporting removing it. The library director's response, I think, has been great. Um she's basically like, come at me brah.
Right, her exact words were, he knows where to find me.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Uh so yeah, they will be, they have seventy-five days to complete their request for reconsideration process. Um and the library director gets to make the decision, and then it can be appealed to the library board, and they have another period of time that they can um review at that time.
So you said the prosecutor is bringing the complaint. Is he doing that in, is is he doing that to support somebody? Is somebody behind him?
Or representing to someone.
Yeah, representing, that's about a term.
That's a good question. I'm not sure. It sounded to me like he just um heard about this and decided it would be a good high-profile thing for him to pursue.
Yeah, that's what it always is, yes.
Hmm, interesting.
He since has walked back making the criminal charge.
I mean, what is the basis of the criminal charge? If the book has been, it has the book been declared pornography? If it hasn't been declared pornography, what is the basis of the?
He was basing it on a law that um it's something about enticing minors to a sexual act or something like that.
Okay.
But are the taxpayers happy with this? I mean, are tax, their tax dollars are, this is kind of a waste of money, I think.
The book.
The taxpayers don't care about their tax dollars. They just care about the the my side versus the other side.
Yeah, they kinda do.
Hmm, there's been vocal people on both sides. Some many people have come out in support of keeping the book, and many others have said they don't want it in your library. So it'll go through the process, and then it still happens. But speaking of tax dollars and intellectual freedom debates, the library director at the Kent District Library, which is a large system on the west side of the state, he worked with his board to rewrite his employment contract to say that if he is removed for um refusing to censor a book, he would be owed four-year salary severance pay.
Wow, did you get that?
Yeah.
And and they agree?
Yeah.
Good for them.
Yeah.
Good for them.
So the taxpayers would put their money where their mouth is in that case.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's funny.
Yeah.
But that makes me feel better in, especially in that geographic area
Yes.
or geopolitical area that they're standing behind.
Yeah, because this be this is are, is the taxpayer really affected? The money is gonna get paid out of the lives, if that hap- if that comes about, the library, the he gets paid or he or she gets paid out of the the library's uh f- funds, but that doesn't mean that the library actually gets more funds from the taxpayers, you know, it's it's
True.
it's 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 just a stance. It's just all grandstanding basically on both sides.
Sure.
I don't have a problem with that, though. I think it's a statement that the that the board is standing behind their director
It's a statement, it's a statement, yeah.
and is taking a stand for um free speech.
Yes, and there it shows their commitment.
Especially since a neighboring library closed down in that area about a year ago because of that.
Right.
Isn't the, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Does the, does the library have that book?
That's okay.
Does this library have that book?
Oh, it's available through Hoopla.
Available through Hoopla, okay. Do we control the content of Hoopla?
Um, no.
But we choose the books that we want in a collection, so you could just as easily say we don't want it.
Is that true?
In Hoopla, I think it's, I don't know how it's turned on and off, but I think it's more just you have access to everything.
Yeah, but we choose to work with Hoopla, right?
Yes. All right, well, my next update is about the photo contest. There's a few days left for folks to enter the photo contest. The deadline is this Sunday at midnight. Um right now, we have forty-five photos entered, um but there's still five days left for folks to.
What was our number last year total?
Oh, I wanna say like sixty-seven, high sixties.
Oh.
A lot of entries come in in the last several days.
Yeah, okay.
So I I would feel pretty confident saying we'll get at least ten to fifteen more entries in the in these next five days.
Oh, wow.
Agreed.
Good.
Um and so just a reminder that the reception is Saturday, April twenty-ninth at two PM, and I hope that all of you can attend.
Do they have to submit on paper, or can they submit electronically?
Either way.
Either way.
The vast majority come in electronically.
I'm sure.
Um just a reminder about the Building and Grounds Committee meeting. That's on April thirteenth at nine AM. Um we will be joined at that meeting by an engineer from Spalding to Decker, who will review the lower-level water issues. So there's nothing new to report on that. We'll we'll get an update from that engineer. And uh my hope is that that person will help us decide on the next steps and how to move forward on that. Um that is tied to our parking lot renovation project, so those two things are very closely linked. And whatever steps we take to solve the problems for the water will impact the parking lot. Um the roofing issues are um, we're still trying to coordinate those things. We are working with the Quinn Evans Architect to try to solve the skylight problem. And um we've been waiting for decent weather to look at the flashing issues that are happening. So um not much to update on those things, but they're they're moving forward. We also have been waiting until the fiscal year starts to spend new money on new projects. And then a couple of staffing updates. Um as you all know, Jerry Ashley, who has been our longtime full-time maintenance assistant, twenty-five years he's been in that role. He is retiring on April fourteenth, so there's a a page on the scrapbook for you to sign who's our skeleton. Um Hugo and I have been working to fill his role, um fill that position. We are doing some interviews next week, so we hope to have some great, starting April fifteenth.
So you have receiver at the mains, okay.
Yes.
And is this a full-time position?
Yep, yes, it is. There's just two full-time people in the facilities department, the department head and this maintenance assistant. Um and we still have multiple open positions in other areas. So we've had, seems like between two and four open positions for like a year and a half, two years. Um right now, we are hiring for a youth services intern, and we are just finishing up the process to hire for a library monitor and a part-time adult services librarian, so still hiring.
And a technical services clerk.
And the technical services clerk, yes, thank you.
I wonder if, um because I'm seeing the notices on social media, and I'm hoping they're getting attention, 'cause I'm seeing them a lot. I wonder, since there is a a big span of what the jobs are, would it be helpful to put some listings in there too of what they are? 'Cause I know you said we want, you know, great people or amazing people, which is wonderful. Just throwing it out there.
Perhaps. I think we link back to the website where all the information is, but um
Oh, good idea, yeah.
We, I have seen some really effective, you know, like, do you like to organize things? And maybe you should be a page from other libraries, so that might be cute. Um and then I wanted to report that the library received a FOIA request last week, which is a Freedom of Information Act request. It was in regard to the library's strategic plan article that was in the Eagle last week. The person wanted to know who the eleven community leaders who were interviewed one-on-one were, their names and their titles. Um and so that information was shared with the person. Um they came back and asked if there were no community members that were interviewed as part of the strategic planning process, to which um we responded that we did do the community survey and got over five hundred respondents. The focus groups were open to the community and all the ways that we advertised that to try to get community input.
It says that in the article.
It did.
Okay.
And was this person just an interested community member?
Yep. So they were satisfied with that information? Um and then I'll talk about the budget when we talk about the budget. That's all I have to report.
Great, thank you very much. Uh okay, well, now we'll move on to the call to the public. And we have Deb here from the SOC.
Yes, I'm representing SOC. Do we have anything super exciting to mention? We're just going through our usual transition of old SOC to new SOC starting in April.
Any plans yet for the holiday party?
Um, not officially.
You know what, Joan Luxa asked if we had a date yet, too.
Yeah.
I know we submitted the wish list for uh to the friends for it, um but we haven't discussed details yet.
Okay. Uh and Deb, will you just remind us the, our our three new SOC members?
Yeah, so I'm Deb Smith, and I will be the new chairperson, uh taking over for Laura Crayley. And then Laura, um Amanda Carol Stein, Anna's a treasurer. And then Laura Norman will be taking over as secretary. So Laura for Laura.
Yeah.
Where is Laura?
Is it even trade?
She works in circulation.
Okay.
She's a clerk.
Okay.
She's relatively new, a couple of years.
Is she, okay.
Yes. She does pottery, if if you're familiar, she's one of our, does pottery outside, so.
Well, we'll get to her when she comes in. Did she have things displayed in the, oh, then I saw her do that.
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Okay, very talented.
Yes. Very nice.
Mm-hmm. We have a very talented career.
Oh my gosh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Speaking of Jerry and his paintings, yes.
Yeah, yes. Well, we have an artist at the end of the table, too.
Um, thank you. That's right. Uh okay, we will move on to unfinished business. Do we have any of that?
We do not.
No, okay, so let's uh focus then on our new business and um discuss budget.
Yay, budget. All right, well, um I was gonna go through and give the highlights of our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three amended budget. Um so if you will bear with me, I'm watching, keeping an eye on the time, Keith, I know you guys.
No, that's okay. May I ask, isn't this similar information to what we looked at? Okay.
It's identical, yes.
Yeah.
It's identical.
It's the same, yeah.
Then let me just throw out this wild question. Why are we going through it again if it's identical?
Because this is being taped.
Oh, 'cause it's being taped, got it, got it.
Yeah.
And it has to be, um it's open to the general public to read.
Okay, that answers the question.
And tonight.
And so was that other meeting, actually, they could have attended, 'cause we were gathering.
Okay, no, that that answers the question. Let's do it.
But that was like, you know, for us to understand everything in it, and tonight is when we will be able to officially adopt.
Okay, yes. Got it, thank you for explaining that, okay.
Yes, thank you, yes.
So tonight, uh my review will be quicker and briefer, and it will be for the benefit of the public. It's hearing throngs tonight. All right, so as you know, our budget has two parts. We've got our current year, which we're amending, because things change throughout the year. And we have our next fiscal year that we're proposing. So for the twenty-two twenty-three amended budget, revenues increased a little bit by a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars compared to what we thought we were going to get in March of twenty-two. Um and that was for a variety of reasons, and those are all detailed in the budget um message, the director's budget message. So I will not go through all of those. Operating expenditures increased by a little bit, a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars compared to what we thought we would be spending when we did the budget in March. And Keith, I wanna point out that you were correct. We had done a little math error when we were at the summary part of the um budget message. Um I thought that the capital improvements number was somehow worked in there, but it was not, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you for explaining that, thank you.
Um, let me move down a page here. So the library board did request the full assessment of the two approved mills, and that was done in August of twenty-twenty-two. Um those mills are rolled back according to the headly amendment to one point eight six five three. And so that is what we requested Bloomfield Township to levy for us in December of twenty-twenty-two, and they did. And we've been receiving those um tax payments as they come in. And now we'll move into the twenty-three twenty-four budget. Um so our revenues are expected to increase a little bit over our current year by two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Um and that's just due to an increase in property taxes. And also the anticipated market improvement for um our investments. Expenditures will increase a little bit as well, thirty-one thousand dollars, um that's over our current budget year. The increases, we have some increases in our personnel expenditures budget. That will, that's the biggest increase overall, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, and that's due to um a three percent raise in salaries. And also our retirement healthcare premiums jumped up quite a bit because we added four people to the retirement healthcare group in this last year. So that is bumping up quite a bit. The functional category of library services, which is the category that includes books and DVDs and audiobooks and programming, that's going up just a teensy bit, a little over a thousand dollars, and that's mostly due to um a shift to electronic services and increasing a little bit of spending there. Facilities and equipment is going to, going down by fifty-seven thousand dollars, and that's due to completing a bunch of projects that we had done, such as the tracheal surgery and some cybersecurity upgrades. So there are more of those on the on the horizon. And our other operating expenditures decreased a lot because we are no longer budgeting for the temporary accounting services that we needed to get us through last year. Um so overall, oh, and then our capital projects increased by a little bit, and that's because we added some more IT projects and um building projects. Um I am not going to read all of these numbers. You can see them in the packet. But um are there any questions about the amendments to the twenty-two twenty-three or proposed twenty-three twenty-four budget? And Shane, I wanted to make sure that you had read in my memo the compensated absences detail. You had asked.
You saw two, I said two, it said two years, which I think means we have two years of of sick time, and then it falls off.
It's two years of vacation time.
It's vacation time.
Mm-hmm, and then sick time is paid out only to those employees that were hired before May thirty-first, twenty-eleven. And that was capped, too.
Say that one more time.
Sick time is paid out, but only to those employees who were hired before twenty-eleven.
Where's the cap on the sick time?
Three hundred hours.
It's so confusing when people do it in hours, like, so that was, if it was ten, it'd be thirty, so it's like thirty-two, thirty-three days, a month.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And again, we just set that aside in our fund balance, so that if everybody retired on the same day, we had to pay everybody out. That's set aside in our fund balance.
What's the vacation policy? How many weeks?
It varies.
Like from what to what?
Uh four weeks to, I don't know, how many do the clerks get when they start?
Weeks of vacation?
Yeah.
Two?
So two to four.
Two to four, depending on your.
Four standard.
And it, you know, as you have more longevity, you get more time.
Thank you.
Of course. And then the gift fund is just the gift fund. We don't assume that we're gonna get any gifts except for the Meyer Scholarship. And that's basically a tracking budget. We just track what we get, and we try to spend it in the year. If we don't, it rolls over. Anything else on the budget?
Good job. No, but thank you and the staff for the work you did.
Yeah, yeah, the whole team, the whole team. So much goes into this, and.
It does.
Well, yeah, I've got to thank Monica and um Toby for all he did, and Sandy Bird, and all the department heads, and Catherine and Lyndon, and you all, too, so thank you for your careful review. All right, and so there are motions.
So are we, are we ready then to make a motion?
Yeah.
Great. Uh okay, Shane, do you have this pulled up on uh page thirty-seven? Would you make the motion for us?
Yeah. Yeah. Sure, I moved to approve on a functional and total fund basis the proposed general fund budget as attached for fiscal year April first, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library revenues. Eight million, eight hundred sixteen thousand, three sixty-three, expenditures, ten million, six hundred twenty-nine thousand and nine. Fund balance reserve shall be decreased by one million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, six forty-six on a net revenue expenditure basis. There's a planned use of fund balance for capital projects, including the parking lot storm sewer mitigation project. I also moved to approve on a functional and total basis the amended general fund budget as attached for the current fiscal year April one, twenty-two to March thirty-one, twenty-three, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Library. Revenues, eight million, five seventy-three, two one three, and expenditures, ten, four four eight, six four nine. Fund balance reserve shall therefore be decreased by one, eight seven five four, three six on a net revenue expenditure basis. There's a planned use of a fund balance for capital projects, including the LED lighting project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second.
Thank you, Joy. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Enthusiastically.
Okay, and um we'll move on to our uh second motion here. Um and Keith, you have this in front of you on page thirty-nine. Would you please make this motion?
I do. I moved to, sure, I moved to approve on a total fund basis the proposed gift fund budget as attached for fiscal year April one, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library revenue. Revenues of seven hundred dollars and expenditures of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. I also moved to approve on a total fund basis the amended gift fund budget as attached for the current fiscal year, first of April, twenty twenty-two to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library. Revenues of forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars, expenditures of two hundred and seven thousand, twenty-nine dollars.
Thank you very much. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Um, okay. Now it looks like it's time to discuss other?
Yes.
So does anybody have any other other to discuss?
Am I an other or other other?
You're an other.
We're all other others.
Let me speak.
Let me speak.
A little other other.
Um well, I am enthusiastically uh sharing that the Friends had a gangbuster weekend. If you recall, they were making up for last month when the elevator had the issues. And so they had a record Saturday. Um they also had good numbers for Sunday, so they had almost eight thousand dollars in sales, seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents. They also had three hundred and forty-two donations and eighteen new memberships, so. Wonderful. And also I wanna make sure that I uh share the correct date for the Friends of the Library annual meeting. I think I originally said May fourth. It's actually Wednesday, May third.
And that is all.
Thank you.
When are the invites going out for that?
They'll be going out pretty soon.
Okay, just curious.
Say a month in advance, approximately, so my understanding, I don't know, is it a physical invitation or is it email?
Yes.
It's it's both, actually. They have an annual report that they're putting together. We're working on that right now.
That's right.
Um we support them administratively on that. And the, that will include the invite to the annual meeting, so should be coming soon.
I would say by beginning of April.
Yeah.
That's always a great, and then.
Always slated to go.
I haven't been in a few years.
Very nice.
How long is your opportunity?
Wednesday, I deliver food to the door, so I can't.
It will not be that long if there's a.
I think they need the food more than the meeting.
Right, probably.
Is there any other other?
I have an other other. I had the pleasure last Saturday, so I saw the people of, um, just a short time, probably an hour and a half, to meet with Ellie and Barb. Um Ellie used to serve on the board here, Ellie Greenbaum, and um he just, he and Barb, you know, she had books, she brought out a book from, or CDs from ABBA. And she was so excited. I'm like, okay. And then um her mother was there, and her mother had this little cart full of books, and um but they're just wonderful, and they keep they keep so track of what we're doing, and they're just thrilled with the new board members, and they hope one day to be able to meet you guys, and um but it was just wonderful to see him, and it's, it's, what I love about friendship is that you can, you can talk about things that you know that you share, but then you you progress and you talk about things that, you know, that that are new to them, and and so it was just lovely seeing them, and they have a lovely time in Vancouver, but they they still love being here, and and they're planning to spend a little bit more time out here. I think that COVID probably curtailed, well, it did, 'cause he could come over from Canada, but um, and they said to say hello, so I, yeah.
And we know that they're currently working on creating a scholarship for.
They are, yes, yes, and we had a nice discussion with Ellie on that as well, so um yeah, I think that's a great
For a library, so that's special.
great thing that he's thinking of doing, so it's she as well.
Yeah.
That's true.
Great. And is there any other other? Okay, I would just um make sure that everybody got to see all of the comments that came through. There was one very special comment that came from my son. He was very, he was uh um he had a question, and I told him that when people have questions, they can fill out a comment card.
Absolutely.
And then he was very excited to get a response, so um the process works.
There you go.
And even for some of our youngest cardholders, so.
That is nice, very exciting.
I didn't notice that. Now I'm going back to that.
I haven't seen the file go around. I don't open it up here.
Ah, okay, or it's attached in the.
That's, that's okay. I know, I never that open. I'm.
I think it's ready for you to see.
Oh, this one's mine.
Oh, no, that one's.
But that's okay.
Oh, okay, that's nice.
It is, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Nice, I should have listened to you, sorry, Lyndon.
And is there, if there is no other other, then I will mention that our um our next board meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. And that's just a reminder that that in April, we meet on the fourth. I'm looking at you.
I know.
Well, I'll I'll show a face, maybe, 'cause, oh, thank you for looking at me. Well, I'll, I'll show up anyway because, oh, thank you for looking at me.
Just out of your card, it's my, you're a person.
I will, I will show up on the third as normal and sit here and then complain and then I will go home with my tail. In the month of April, we meet on the fourth Tuesday of the month. And, um, but we will all be together before that for the Building and Grounds meeting on the thirteenth, yes.
Also, there's a volunteer reception. Are we, we're supposed to append that?
Yes. Uh, it's totally, it's voluntary, it's a, yes, but you are, you are all considered volunteers and so you will be honored at this reception too.
Okay, I'd love to, I'd love to, I'm sure. Okay.
And, and that's a nice way to meet some of the vol, people who regularly volunteer at libraries.
Yes, I'm looking forward to it. Yes, yes.
And is the book, are they selected? Is that a secret?
No.
The books?
Yeah.
Uh, you'll know what it is.
So you'll get a, no, you won't know what it is, but um, a book is selected, um, with some of your interests and so you each year, there's a book that's in the library and plated, and plated with our names on, in there
And plated in our name card.
on things that you like, so, yeah.
It's wonderful.
Sidewalks will be yours.
Which ones, why?
Sidewalks of course.
That's why I was saying.
Science fiction, sorry.
Yeah, science fiction.
Travel. Cars.
Yes.
Well, if there is nothing else, then we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Wow.
At seven thirty-two.
We're getting efficient.
In time for you to get to where you go.
My gosh.
Amazing, I hope I didn't have any negative influence on, pushing me.
No, that was great.
Which, which is so efficient.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.